Good evening and welcome to the Town of Sykesville Mayor and Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, June ten, two thousand and twenty-four. We will call this meeting to order at seven oh one P M. We begin our meeting as we begin all meetings in these chambers with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That brief moment of silence, please. Thanks, everyone. This is the point where I usually ask if we have anyone signed up for public comments, but I'm gonna guess the answers, yes?
There is.
Very good. So before we begin with public comments, please note that the general public comments made at the beginning of any council meeting are meant for councils' consideration and its future determination of what, if any, action will be taken on that matter. The council is not permitted to hold a full discussion at this time on any new business that has not previously been posted on the formal agenda for tonight's meeting, though should anyone hears comments pose any particular straightforward questions, there would be nothing wrong and I would encourage any council member or member of staff to answer those questions directly. You are each given three minutes, as I just mentioned, and for the record, if you can state your name, the group, if any, on whose behalf you wish to speak, and your home address, and the subject matter about which you wish to speak when you approach the podium, we would greatly appreciate it. So we can start that now.
First up, we have Mary Kay Canahan.
Hi, Pastor, how are you?
Fine.
Good.
Do I come here?
Yes, please.
You know it's dangerous to put a microphone in front of the preacher.
I have had that experience before, but please.
Good evening, friends and neighbors. I'm Mary Kay Canahan. I'm new pastor at Saint Paul's United Methodist Church across the street and up the hill. And I really came just to make an introduction tonight. And the timing of it is simply that I am experiencing my first season in leadership and in relationship with you all on Main Street. And so first festival season, first farmer's market season, and all of that. And I guess it's fitting, really, that I, given what Lisa said to me, that I remark that my first big event downtown was the Pride event, the Pride Festival at the beginning of this month. And I will not be able to stay for this meeting. I'm needed at the pub.
I have my first question.
The men of the church are waiting for me there. And so I guess it's kind of fitting that I say that I think some of the things you're gonna talk about tonight related to that possibly began at the intersection of church and Main. And the confrontation that I think some of you are gonna speak to started with members of the congregation, our youth leader, staff, and children of the church. I was not gonna say too much about that. I'm sure that it was, I think it was livestreamed and captured by the person who was instigating it, so I'm sure it's out there somewhere. What I really came to say was that I'm really glad to be in Sykesville. We wanna be a good neighbor. I think we're off to a good start. I see merchants and familiar faces in this room, and I've tried to get around and meet a lot of people. And with regard to the events on June second, I really just wanted to say thank you, Chief Spalding. The officers were incredibly responsive and very considered in their approach to, both to me and to the individual who was so disruptive. And I hope that there will be further discussion tonight on that matter so that we can be well-prepared for next year, even if, I hope, really, that we don't need to be.
Indeed. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And welcome to Sykesville. Welcome to Sykesville. Who is next?
Megan Manis.
Amy Megan.
Hi, I'm Megan Manis. I am at seven oh three Obruck Road, and I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Sykesville Connection. I am the current board president for the Downtown Sykesville Connection. We were advised by our, by the Town and Downtown Sykesville Connections liaison, Leo, you know, to come and start a discussion about some of the events that happen on Pride. And just to start that discussion, I and other board members are here this evening, and we actually rescheduled our current board meeting so that we could attend tonight. And Julie will be speaking in a moment, and I just wanted it to be known that she's speaking on behalf of the entire organization. Her words are coming from us. We have just chosen her to be our speaker tonight.
Thank you, Megan. So that makes you welcome.
I have my second question. No.
Welcome, Julie.
Thank you. My name is Julie De La Maria. I'm the executive director of the Downtown Sykesville Connection. I live on seventy-four eleven Second Avenue in Sykesville. As my board president just mentioned, I have been deputized for that conversation after Leo saw that our presence here would be welcome and necessary for further discussion. I first want to say that in different time, in different places, the DSC's presence here could have felt maybe almost negative, and I'm very glad and happy that now we are in a time when, when we come here, it's for an open conversation, seek guidance, and being supported in all we do. So I'm going to continue with what, with a little bit of clarification of what happens leading to two events like Pride Day. We do meet with the police department together, and we try to craft a safe event for everyone. And the reason why I thought it would be important for us to be here tonight is when we don't fully succeed or experience a failure, depending if you're a glass of full or a glass of empty person, it's important to take accountability, acknowledge and discuss the impact on that, not only on our guests, but also on our resident and our business owner on that day. So this is why we wanted to have that conversation. So we had, we experienced, as you may know, you may have gotten questions from your constituents about what happened. We, we did, I'm pretty sure you did. We did experience the presence of several protesters. I think the largest number of them at all, at one time on Main Street was seven people. Across different groups, there was one group of one, one group of two, and one group of four. And when that happened, we, there was a confusion on my part because I was not made aware that there was a change of the protester area. My, my goal and my role was to greet those protesters and inform them about that. Unfortunately, I did not have the right information about it. Also, I want this group to know that those protesters were not in a, in a number that would have required them to be directed to that area because I think it's twelve people, Chief.
As a rule of thumb.
Yeah, as a rule of thumb. So for me, it was informational purpose mostly. So what we had to deal with that day, it was an array of different things, and we didn't all plain them in our heads the way we may, we should probably should have done. But the change of that area created a situation when we had two groups on both sides of Main Street, and we had discussed it. That was probably not the best idea for public safety. But other things happened that day, things like very loud megaphone or amplifier being played that we tried to drown into our own speaker system just because what was said was not, was not, should not have been heard by anyone. During our meeting with Chief, I was under the impression that the threshold for removing someone was, I believe, when the majority of the people were offending and shocked, we didn't get to make that assessment then because we did more damage controls than anything else. I think that's a conversation we need to have in deeper. But what I'm hoping to have community members involved and leadership involved is to get guidance on ordinance that would help the police department to not only have to rely on the law, because sometime I have heard it's a gray area and you want to protect everyone's rights, but maybe turn ordinance that are clearer or any type of guidance we could have so we are able to not have a protester screaming a twelve-years-old face or follow that child or film that child on town property. Anything that would avoid that would make my day.
Point of order, Mayor, time. I would, I would like to be able to extend it.
Make a motion to extend it?
I would.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone opposed to that? Continue. Thank you, generally.
I think that's all.
Bar, you have more.
Good job.
All I can say is I'm, I'm proud of the rules of order that you just conducted. So I appreciate that because I'd like to distribute them equally, no matter what's being said. So thank you. Julie, I have a question. I guess I could pose it to Chief and you. Was there some sort of an emergency plan of action that had been developed in the event of a protest situation? Yes?
Absolutely. Do one for every event.
Okay.
This one took an extra, I had asked Chief for, in preparation of that, to please put in writing something that I could educate my volunteers about because, you know, sometime we, we work on assumption or what we believe is logic, and sometime it's not accurate. So Chief had drafted an extra section that we are now going to have in all of our emergency action plans. There was, I believe, eight points in that, in that section. But I, I think those points are the things that we need to make a decision, and I, I know it's not mine to make, I don't know if it's yours to make, I don't know how that works with Chief, but to, to walk the gray line around those guidelines because I'm all for being inclusive with people. I extend my hand as soon as I showed up and introduced myself. But we also have a responsibility to protect our people.
I can't agree with you more. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Julie or the DSCs or Julie? I wanna make a couple comments. Staff and I debriefed on Wednesday at my weekly meeting following Saturday, June first or second?
Second.
Second, first, June first, thought so. And we'll just, Pastor was had the date wrong, and she's not here, so that's okay. I thought it was first. So we, I, I spoke at length with, with Joe, with the town manager, regarding the way the events unfolded. And I began everything with how incredibly impressed I was with a few outstanding officers and how the protesters were handled. The utmost, I have the utmost respect for how it was handled. And in fact, I, I observed Officer Jacobs doing an esteemed job of it for hours, nonstop, on the one protester who seemed to have the smallest, the, the, the.
I noticed too.
The best vocabulary from a particular book of four-letter words, and somehow combined it with one of the oldest books known to man. And ironically enough, began his tirade with a member of the cloth and, and those serving a church on Pride Day. So I, I started with that, and I still feel that way, and I wanted to announce that publicly. Our auxiliary police officers and our sworn officers that day. I, I was moved to tears a few times because of how incredible they were. I'd like to say how proud I am. Moving forward, we will be dusting off the, the noise ordinance. I want to, and I'm sure that the council will agree, would love to fill our law enforcement officers' coffers with the tools needed to at least shut down the noise. Not shut down the voices, but shut down the noise that actually continued an hour past the event, which is what brought out, brought upon the written complaint that, that I received and certain members of the council received from a Main Street resident who expressed herself quite well. And, and I, and I felt her frustration personally, and it came through in her words, and I'm sure the council would agree. It's difficult for me in my position to, all at once, somehow separate defending the slurs from, 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 from the, from the rights of the individual to, to make them. Here's the problem. Ninety-five percent of what was said that was bothersome was purely defamatory. It was, I don't mind a four-letter word. I make use of them myself quite, quite often. But when directing such defaming language to any person on Main Street in Sykesville, if we can't do something about that, I, I throw my hands up. And, and, and so we, we will be revisiting those, any ordinances that, that we can, and, and staff has already forwarded those in question to our town attorney for review.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you. No, that's what you just said was perfect. Pastor Mary Kay was a good sport because she got one extra letter in the words that was used against her. And I think also, speaking of what the audience and the public may have seen, we certainly don't want to give the perception that the protesters have more rights than anyone else. And that's also something I wanted to express because I know that we have received complaint, and each time we express how closely we work with the town, how hard we will, we will work to improve. But I don't want anyone going to a DSC event thinking that they are not going to be taken care of, that they are not going to be respected, embraced, and supported, and that any others can just behave like, I don't know how many letters that is.
Another four-letter word. And, and lastly, my final comment, at least for this portion of the meeting regarding this matter, will, will be the following. The adults that were there that day, who walk around in my shoes every day, have heard it all. And I was simply unmoved by it. But the fact that the children were at the receiving end of threats of, you know, fiery end to their lives simply because they were on Main Street, there is something that we have to be able to do about that. And so we will regroup and we will, we will make that happen. Thank you. Did you wanna step up?
I have a question with that, so.
It would, it would be good, yeah, because we're recorded and, and you'll be amplified that way. Not as much as the protesters were, but you'll be amplified and recorded. Thank you. Your name and.
My name's William Lee Hirschman. I'm the owner of the band shop. I was one of the core sponsors of the Pride Day events. We wish to continue to be a core sponsor every year for it, you know? It's, it's something that we believe in. One question I had, just in general, is, I, I obviously understand people's right to protest, but the issue that I, I came before tonight was, I was watching children, you know, extreme minors getting literally cornered over here at Bex in the alleyway and in between by grown adults just using everything under the sun towards these children. I intervened. I went over there and I asked the gentleman, you know, to please leave, but is there anything that can be done in a situation with the minors? Or like, or are they just still allowed to, obviously, they have their freedom of speech, but is there any situation where that can get shut down instantly? Because it was going on for quite some time. I ran into you over an hour after the event. I took my family to dinner downtown Sykesville, like we do every Saturday, and it was still going on at hell when the music started downtown. So it was, you know, yeah, quite after the hours of the, the event was posted for. But like I said, the, these individuals, unfortunately, they were just literally, I almost feel like they were intentionally targeting children and with nobody there to, to help, you know? There's also, okay, well, the kids were unsupervised, sure, but at the same time, there's gotta be something that can be allowed to happen to shut that down instantly, you know? Because if that was my kid, I, I would have a real big problem with that one. And I had a big problem with them, they weren't my children, so. Is there anything that's, that's loud with that, or?
So I, I guess, I remember having a rather robust conversation about this particular type of event happening, not this event, like Pride event, but an event happening where there would be a protest, and then there would be kind of like a counter protest to that protest. And what do you do in that situation, especially with any type of polarizing topic, right? At the time, I was thinking more around the, the issues about the discussions about Black Lives Matters or All Lives Matters or Blue Lives Matters or any other Lives Matters. You know, there's a lot of different viewpoints in reference to that that different people in our community might share, and they may be very emotionally charged about it.
Certainly.
And I, as I recall the discussion, we worked on language to put into the ordinance that talked about, and it was a particular word of legal precedent because we had a debate about it. And maybe you've already litigated this, Mayor, and if you have, I apologize for bringing it up.
We haven't. And I thought of that as well. I believe the word was, was obscene.
I think that's what the word was. And then obscene meant something.
Yes.
And I guess, I guess, and we don't need to go through it more now. I don't know if now is the right time. We could put it on a future agenda, but I wasn't here. I was out of country, so I didn't see the events unfold, unfortunately, because it'd be, then I'd have probably a more stark opinion about it. But the, I guess, there is, there, at least during the conversation, and maybe this is the reason to dust it off, is that I thought that things that were very derogatory in nature, like people yelling obscenities at someone, which sounds like what happened, people using sexually graphic language as an example, would all be covered under the ordinance as it was written. And that's maybe where a question is that I have, is that it sounds like, you know, kids were.
Exactly, and that's.
Were talked to, adults were talked to. And, and I thought that we'd covered it in the original language of the ordinance, but maybe I'm mistaken. So I'm, I'm all for sort of taking another hash at it, and I don't know, Joe, if you have a different view on it.
And again, I think obviously, you know, dusting off all the ordinances at play is, is certainly warranted, and we, we have already started that process. And absolutely, well, I think the particular provision that you're talking about was actually in our sign ordinance, not our noise ordinance. So again, when we looked at how to, how to regulate.
Thank you.
Permanent signage on Main Street, that's where the obscenity piece of that language came from. It had nothing to do with the disturbing of the peace.
Okay.
Section. But again, how those all marry together and how we can make them work together in, in Sykesville is, is obviously something that we'll do.
Okay.
Thank you.
My only suggestion is that if there could be something specifically protecting the minors in that situation, you know, at a certain point in time, you're, you're beyond disturbing the peace at that point in time, right? You know, you're, you're messing with children. They're very impressionable at that age. And it was, other than that, you know, a happy, loving event, you know, with everybody celebrating. And for this to be the tone afterwards where we're still reflecting, you know, on, on the negative, it, it's a big damper on it, you know? But more importantly, the, the safety of the children and everybody in attendance has gotta be foremost, and, and it's, by no means is it a slating us what you guys did because you guys are fantastic down there from everything I saw in, in my limited capacity that day. But I just, I, I have a big issue watching adults corner children. Like, I, I, I cannot let that go, so.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you, Mary.
Is there anyone else?
It's all signed up.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone. I'd encourage you to stay to the end, but you can leave if you must. Of course, you can leave. So the first item on our agenda, our formal, formal agenda, is our consent agenda, which this meeting is inclusive of the meeting minutes from our May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Presuming that all have reviewed the minutes before voting on the consent agenda, were there any suggested edits of the minutes submitted to the clerk?
No, but I am going to abstain.
That was my next.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you're gonna ask or not, Mayor.
Before calling for a motion, are there any members present with intentions to abstain from voting on this agenda item? If so, please make your reason for abstaining known.
And, and the reason that I'm abstaining is that I was out of country on a very wonderful celebratory event for my daughter Susanna, who just graduated from college, and we went to Iceland. I've not had the opportunity to do a review. My mother was in town over the weekend, and I just haven't gotten to it with different things that are there. So I've read through everything, but I haven't been able to make it all.
Thank you for your explanation, for your abstention, sir.
Should give him three minutes.
Yeah.
Next time, I'll take five minutes. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilman Grassley. Is there a second?
Second.
Council President Carter with the second. All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, those are passed. Our next item of business is unfinished business. It's the public hearing and the consideration and discussion and action on the adoption of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-four dash oh five and ordinance to amend the adopted budget of the Town of Sykesville for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. A quick item summary because we actually presented this, introduced this ordinance two weeks ago. As we progress through the fiscal year, several budget categories need to be adjusted to properly account for current and expected revenues and expenses for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-four. This document includes an overall decrease in revenues and expenditures of one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, fifty dollars. I presume the council members have reviewed the revenues and expenses in detail. As such, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, just for clarification, most of these reductions are related to our capital projects that have been moved to next fiscal year. So obviously, since I'm not gonna have it this fiscal year, we wanna reduce the budget to reflect that. There is one minor change from when it was introduced to what's in front of you today, and that does involve one capital outlay item. So we've been able to procure, and I'll give Chief a little props for this, procure a, I guess, about to be auctioned off vehicle from the county sheriff's office to be utilized for our auxiliary. So again, we did shift some of the capital outlay money in the public safety budget to make sure that we can cover that expense.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear that. So let me.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for two thousand and twenty-four dash oh five.
Okay, before, that's great. And I'll ask for a second and a second. The short of this, then, is that this is the final amendment to the current fiscal year's approved budget that we approved back a year plus ago, and that the town's overall revenues and expenses were decreased to be equal to one another, so the ballot, the budget is still balanced. We have a motion on the table. Do I have a second to open the public hearing? Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Grassley and seconded by Councilmember Geroff. Does the council have any comments for the education of the public for the purposes of the hearing prior to us calling for a vote on opening of the hearing? Okay. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, the public hearing is open at seven twenty-nine P M. Are there any members here in the public at present that would like to make comment regarding this ordinance? Okay, I'll count to thirty so that the clock changes when I gavel out the public hearing.
Did we receive any emails or any concerns about the budget at this point?
There were, there were no emails or any communications received. Don't let you better.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Councilman Grassley. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Geroff. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
That's everyone, I believe. Any opposed? All right. It's seven thirty. Public hearing is closed.
Awesome.
So now it's time to, I guess, ask the council if they have any questions for staff regarding this ordinance. And if not, then, you know, it's time. I can remind you of what the staff is recommending. And, and so doing, I will basically be reading the motion. The, the staff is recommending that we approve ordinance number two thousand and twenty-four dash oh five and ordinance to amend the adopted budget of the Town of Sykesville for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Grassley. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Geroff. Again, before I call for a vote, is there any need for further debate on the motion on the table? Okay, hearing now, I will remind the council, oh, I'm sorry, hearing now, I will call for that vote. All in favor of, and I'll repeat it, approval of ordinance or adoption, adoption of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-four dash oh five and ordinance to amend the adopted budget of the Town of Sykesville for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please say aye.
Aye.
That's everyone. Anyone opposed? That ordinance is now adopted unanimously. That brings us to our announcements and reports. I'll begin with those announcements. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty four. Please make a mental note. We meet once in June, July, and August, and therefore there will be almost an entire month between now and our next meeting. Councilman Grassley, you have something to say.
Uh is everyone gonna make make the July meeting? I'm sorry.
It are you asking because you're afraid you'll be the only one?
That's my uh, you know, that's my.
I'll be here.
Okay, I guess that's my my that's my birthday, so I was thinking about taking it off.
You'll make sure there's enough here without you.
You don't even need to call it in, so we'll talk about that later.
Alright.
Thank you, um.
I just wasn't sure, cause it's kinda close to the fourth of July weekend, but.
It is.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Alright.
Okay, cool.
I'm between trips, so I'm good.
Alright, good. No, it's good that you asked. It never even occurred to me that it's that it's that close to your birthday and then federal holiday.
Yes.
Okay.
And if we're gonna uh revisit the noise ordinance by July, you think so or?
Uh we could.
I mean, I'm gonna be in town, but I'll 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 try. I'll make sure I'm here for that.
What if that's the only agenda item and then we can get you off to to Bex?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll come in for that.
Okay.
So my birthday is July second.
Yes, yeah, I think you do, actually. Yes. I believe you have the day off. Uh thank you. Uh next announcement, we have volunteer opportunities available on the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Planning Commission, Crossing Guard. And Police Auxiliary. If you're interested in any of these opportunities to volunteer for the town, please email town at Sykesville dot net for more info. Brings us to the staff updates and I'm going to follow our uh S O P, which I have jumped around from in the recent uh meetings. And begin with our treasurer's report. You're welcome. Thank you. Uh listen, I gotta keep you on your.
I already had planned to file it, Chief, so that's. Uh again, if the audience wants to uh depart right now, this is not the most exciting part of the meeting tonight. First of all, I'll just make a quick announcement that I will be departing at the end of the year, so. Biggest notice probably ever given in the history of. I think I've set a record in terms of seven month notice, so.
Thank you for making that.
We're shorter, Joe. Um so anyway, at this time, I'd like to uh present the May treasurer's report. Don't know if you guys had an opportunity to review, because it's quite a short period of time for me to prepare this, so I didn't have much. Get it out there and let you guys see. So we changed from April to May about seventy thousand. We're two sixty four above budget right now, which is pretty good shape. In reviewing the revenues, the uh the biggest one obviously was the state income tax that we got was the May portion of two fifty six. Which brings us in about a hundred fifty thousand now of budget. Obviously, we're expecting a pretty lo- sizable June uh income tax. Um also, we got another portion of highway user revenue, thirty six thousand. It's only through February. So um we'll still have plenty of time to hopefully meet budget on that. Also, we got in terms of the general revenue, uh we've received a hundred eighteen thousand for legit health insurance refund. Because healthy group of individuals here at the town, so they exercise it. I make sure we all do. Um in terms of the check register, nothing really exciting. We did spend some money, but. Uh spent about eight thousand for trash and recycle cans for uh Raincliff. Uh we spent about thirty six thousand for some work done regarding the Baldwin Station. Well, it's not the Baldwin Station.
If you can call it that, that's that's the name of the architect, so you can always call it the Baldwin Station.
Uh we spent about fourteen, seven springs, uh dealing some little psych, schoolhouse, property maintenance, new plannings, et cetera. And then we spent ten thousand on a donation to the Sykesville Freedom District Fire Department. Uh our annual department. I'm sorry, I didn't get you. I know you like wanted to run that.
No, I was given the opportunity. I passed on that opportunity and then ten minutes after you sent it off, I changed my mind. It's fine. Thank you, Craig.
So uh I'll try to communicate better. Well, I guess. Next individual will try to communicate better. Uh also, I was that fast to be able to input the budget revision that we approved tonight into this report.
Wow.
Just so you were looking at. A live, you know, budget revision. That fast. Get that done, so that's that was incorporated in that report. Uh so that's it for me. Any questions?
I have none. How about anyone on my left? On my right?
I do not.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
But since you've made it public that you're leaving us, I just wanna say thank you for all the tremendous work that you've done.
Thank you. Thanks, Lord. Appreciate you.
You're here. Are you are we gonna say it every month now?
Yeah, I was gonna say you'll have the opportunity. We will have the opportunity to do that a few more times.
Well, sure, from that point on a bit, you know, ridicule. I have a nickname now that I missed last week. Socks.
It's all good, Craig. We appreciate your socks as much as we appreciate your reports.
Very good.
That brings us to our public safety report, um and I will ask Chief Spalding to join us at the podium.
Uh Mayor?
Thank you, sir.
I wanna be cognizant of uh Lieutenant Queen's time here, so we'll kinda be brief with uh the public safety report. But I did wanna ask you regarding, we didn't really have questions. We had more comments. Do you feel it's necessary to read them into the record?
I don't believe so unless uh oh, okay, no.
Just making observation.
I appreciate that question though, but yeah.
Uh this public safety report will cover the period May twenty first through June second. Uh we had four hundred and seventy six total events during this time. Just a few of the highlights. Uh twelve assist other agency, ten community policing initiatives. Two hundred fifty eight patrol checks and thirty two traffic enforcement initiatives, again for four hundred and seventy six events. During that same time, we had eleven incident reports, uh which I'd be more than happy to answer. Any questions you have regarding?
I'd say it was a very, very busy, uh if I did the math, like nineteen days, eh fifteen days.
Been very busy.
Yeah, um I would just like to see more consistent reporting of what agency is being assisted.
I noticed that, yeah, I know.
It was so good for so long, it's starting to slip. Yeah.
Slipping. I'll I'll get back on them about.
Alright, thank you. I almost sent you an email asking you what those were, but I I figured this would be more helpful. To point it out publicly so that all of your officers realize that I'm upset about.
Hopefully, they're watching.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else for questions?
Uh Chief? You sure?
Yeah.
So just noticing an increase in people feeling and mental health. Levels of crisis and your officers responding and very rare also of the last week events. So both from the reports as well, kind of what's been going on, so are we taking care of our officers? Is there anything you need? Anything our officers need as they're responding to those or debriefing or?
We are taking care of them, you know, we're very concerned about their their well-being. Anytime they experience a traumatic event where, you know, we have a number of. Our supervisors that are trained in crisis intervention, uh part of the crisis intervention team and they they meet with them, so. Thank you for asking, but we're we're taking very good care of.
And Leo, you had a?
Uh Chief, there's nothing in the report about um June first itself, the Pride events. Can you explain why?
We didn't do an an incident report for it. Uh well, we did one separately for an alleged assault. Um and then we covered all of the officer's time on a call for service, so that's why there's not an incident report per se, just covering the whole event. And that's that's standard protocol.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I did wanna mention real briefly uh two things. Um we mentioned Lieutenant, or not Lieutenant, yeah, Sergeant Lacy's warrant sweep. And I wanted to give you the the results of that initiative. He did an unbelievable job. Uh this took. Uh weeks and weeks of preparation on his part. He he personally reviewed over a hundred warrants. And I'm not talking just about warrants here in town, obviously, cause we don't have a hundred warrants here in our town. But throughout the whole county and the state and surrounding jurisdictions, uh he spent a tremendous amount of time on it and it resulted in, I think it was fifty two. Total warrants closed. This involved over dozens of different agencies from from all over the area. It was a a major uh amount of work to coordinate this effort and it was, I think, in my mind, was very successful. And what it really highlights is is Sergeant Lacy's ability and and the fact that he's such a great resource to our town. Not to mention the interagency cooperation between us and being able to get back to the other agencies always help us out. So it was tremendously successful uh event, which fifty two people who were currently wanted. Ended up being being apprehended and 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 uh had their warrants served on them, so it was a great job by Sergeant Lacy.
Thank you, Chief. I have a question along those lines. Um is there a particular staff member at the county level that's normally responsible for this kind of a sweep? And if so, why was Sergeant Lacy put in charge?
He was, well, he wasn't put in charge, but he was asked to help, but uh he did quite a bit of the work and that's the way Sergeant Lacy is. Yeah, once he's involved, he had experience doing this in the past, so I think that's why they they reached out to Sergeant Lacy for it, for his expertise. Uh but it was it was a joint effort. There was a lot of of in- initiative on uh the county's part as well. A lot of the operational aspects were put together by by the county, so uh it was certainly a joint effort.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask a question about it as well? Is how often does this sort of thing occur?
It hasn't been done in like ten years here, so it's been been quite a while, so it's it's not done very often. Um it's really when certain people take the initiative to to try to organize and plan it, because it's so. Like manpower intensive and and time intensive, so uh it's not done too often, but every now and then it's needed.
So that's my question. I mean, I'm just trying to, none of my business, but you know, I'm liking it to my business. We would have major releases of software. Well, it seems to me these are like, instead of doing them one at a time or you. Sort of gather them all up and go, we're gonna have a brand new warrant sweep, rather than you take this one and I'll take that one. And next month, I'll give you two and I'll do one or two and.
Well, they are done one at a time. When they're done, when the warrants are are initially uh uh given out to the police departments. But when they can't find those persons, that's when they end up sitting in a file cabinet somewhere. And until more effort is put into them, um sometimes people are never caught, quite honestly. So these were old warrants that hadn't been served, prior attempts to serve them.
Uh I think the phrase I T bearing on television is cold case. Is that what you're saying?
Uh in a way, some of them date back for years.
You'll notice that seven of the people were deceased.
Yeah, right, that's why, but I was wondering why we didn't know that. That's what actually prompted it. If they've been dead that long, you figure someone should have said, well, I can get rid of this warrant there in the ground.
Not all agencies do that on on in on a regular basis like they should.
Typically, from my experience, it takes an active situation, like pulling somebody over for speeding. And then you run their information and that's when the warrant kicks in, that's.
And you find out they wanted another jurisdiction, yeah.
Yep.
Anything else for Chief?
I did wanna mention that tomorrow is the torch run and we'll have several sworn in auxiliary involved in that, myself included. And uh we have a local athlete that uh we will um be providing a ride to and hanging out with and supporting all day. And Julie, thank you for the gift that we'll be able to provide our local athlete as uh a token of our appreciation for him.
And this is for the Special Olympics?
Yeah, Maryland Special Olympics, yeah.
Thank you.
Something we participate in every year.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Welcome.
So invite uh Lieutenant Jeffrey Queen from our auxiliary.
Now, I don't, I'm not playing any videos or anything like that, so I'm I'm trying to go paperless.
I appreciate you.
Alright, so since uh we last met, it was about three months ago, so these numbers reflect as of a couple days, or actually yesterday. So as you can see, we're down one officer. Um I'm very busily recruiting. I have like three people that. Are on the docket to potentially fill that tenth position, so um. Uh let it be known, probably by the time I talk with you guys again in three months, we'll be at full staff again. Um there are still opportunities for the crossing guard, um so we're just still at the one. Doug's been doing an amazing job. He's been showing up. And um and and been doing great there, so kudos to him and continuing to support.
That's what good community members do, they show up.
Yes.
Thank you.
Man.
So we got one more day left.
Half a day.
Yeah, half a day.
So he's normally in the, yeah, so we'll see. Um alright, so with the hours, so since we last uh met, so we probably. About three hundred or so plus hours since since March, um increase in all our hours. I do wanna highlight the patrol hours have gone up, so we've basically put in close to forty hours of patrol hours more. Since the last time we met, so kinda meeting the the desire to continue to patrol more uh from my from my team here. Uh training hours have been bumped up to, and you can see in the in the right, we've done a lot of training. Specifically, we've prepped for mass demonstrations. Uh we've took some online training. We've talked about it a little bit at some of our meetings. Not saying that seven people is mass, but it's enough uh items and kind of lessons learned in the in this training that we can apply. If it's one person or a hundred people, so um just know that we're prepped. I've always prepped our team as much as we can. You can't really do much unless you've experienced it. You learn a lot there too as well. So um what, still a lot of new people, so we're doing a lot of familiarization and vehicle operations and I've started doing virtual training. Um we have access to some free online police training, uh which is pretty cool. And so um I wanted to highlight uh uh dealing with individuals with dementia and some diversity training uh there as well, so. Um I know we have in our community folks who are um, you know, getting up there in age like myself. Um so uh but it is important to know how to how to deal with the uh individuals who may seem um. Who may be coming down with dementia and things like that in the community. A lot of events have been supported, uh as you can see already. Um and it's only gonna get uh busier as the summer comes along. Um and then uh as always, we continue our monthly meetings. Um coming up, uh we got recruitment coming, again, uh increased patrols and uh all these events. So uh I will leave it at that, um but questions, concerns?
Anyone on my left?
Looking good.
Okay, and on my right?
I I do wanna put a shout out to, thanks again, Chief and Joe, uh for uh uh thinking outside the box and. Giving us a second vehicle. Um it's gonna get used. Uh we're gonna have to put some money into it, but it's gonna get used. Um so uh we really appreciate that support.
Absolutely.
So.
Quick question, what kind of house checks does the auxiliary do?
So it's, so it's a service that, you know, it's online. You can submit a, do a house check if you're going on vacation, right? So we'll go and we'll follow up with those requests and we'll check the house. And we'll document.
Set eyes on the house, if people are away.
Yep.
I remember years ago, I called the police department when we were going out of town, we were leaving our teenage boys behind and the receptionist just laughed and laughed and laughed. We'll we'll keep an eye on it.
So just same question as for Chief. I know your officers have also been involved in some of the events. Unfortunately, that's that we've been having hard. Anything you need in terms of supporting them?
So we take advantage um what Chief offers, so um and I've always offered myself, available to my officers as well, if they need to talk. Or here's some resources available, so, but I appreciate the support and um we'll take advantage as we need it. Thank you.
Thank you for that thoughtful question. Anyone else?
I like the one-page uh summary. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're gonna continue to get that feedback, just like, just like uh Craig's gonna continue to get the feedback about his socks until he goes.
I mean, I was, you know, taking taking care of Craig. I got my height.
Aw, that's lovely.
High visibility.
Yes.
Thank you for what you do, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
I appreciate you and your entire unit. Thank you, two of you are here. Thank you. Um that brings us to the mayor and council committee reports. And uh I'll start with the gentleman on my far left, Councilman Dyer.
Actually, I have a question. It's not, my comment would have to do with a question to you. I've been at, people have been asking me, have where where is flight cables and have you heard anything?
We have, so they 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 submit flight fiber. Uh they did submit their uh utility permits. I wanna say, you know, six, eight weeks ago, uh we have been reviewing it. We just sent them our final comments, so we hope to have those resolved. You know, possibly even by the end of this week and they'll issue the permit, um and then they'll they'll start construction. So one of the questions we asked was, you know, what is their, you know, quote-unquote, plan of attack for Sykesville so that we have a better idea of kinda where they're gonna be and when. Um so that we can make sure that information is put out to the public, along with whatever they're doing to make sure the public is aware.
Excellent.
So on that, we had someone, when they were out here, they talked about certain neighborhoods would be on poles, certain neighborhoods would be in the ground. Um I was under the assumption that our area was on poles. We did have someone coming out, taking pictures, reporting. It was actually gonna be in the ground, which I have no clue how that's gonna happen, but um if we can just, a- as we get more information, even in which.
We have a set of plans.
To expect.
Yeah, we have the set of plans and basically everything that's above ground now is gonna stay above ground, other than maybe a couple of service lines that might be servicing. Uh individual households. Um so again, I'm happy to look at Central Avenue and that whole area um to see.
Yeah, I was just surprised when the guy was walking around.
I assume delighted too, because the, if I can keep it off the pole and put it in a vault, I'm happier.
Well, yeah, but as we share, we don't have sidewalks. I'm not, they were talking about East Benson, putting it under places. And I was like, they weren't sure where in our neighborhoods without sidewalks that that was.
All the areas where they're gonna be going have to be within the right of way.
Right, and that, so that was. Right, and that, so that was the question. That's why it was more like, hmm.
Will they be using the same lines? Like, ours, I don't have a sidewalk, and I know that when they were fixing our Verizon or whatever, Comcast, it's in our yard, and they have a right of way to use it, so I'm assuming that's gonna be the same way.
Yeah, the right of way extends usually just past the sidewalk. It's in, in typical neighborhoods, so it's like, that's where they're supposed to stay.
Yep.
Excellent.
Looks like it was an important thing to bring up, Mark. Thank you.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you.
Nor do I.
Okay.
Uh, just a reminder, we're doing, uh, movies in the park. Next one is July thirteenth, Jurassic Park.
Oh.
And Miller Cooper.
I hear, I hear the book is better. I don't know. Go ahead.
Uh, DSC did not meet since the last meeting. Got nothing to report.
Okay.
Okay, I've got the long one as usual. Uh, for DSC, the Green Committee is hosting weekly sessions at the Garden every Wednesday at seven P M. Uh, gathering aims to foster community connections and involve some light maintenance activities, so everybody is welcome to join in. Our grant-funded composting pilot program is in final planning stages, um, and it looks like, um, some information will go out, some more on that, um, but there's details available on the About DSC website under Garden and Green Committee pages. Pride event, uh, it was good to see a lot of people down there. Um, it was a great success. The protestors fortunately did not stop the celebration, um, and we hope to, as was discussed tonight, fine-tune the event and, uh, look forward to having this every year. Farmers Market has grown to seventy-two vendors now. Uh, it's huge, and it's a, it's well-attended. Um, I made it down there at nine o'clock this morning, just so I could, or nine o'clock this past Sunday, just so I could get what I needed. Uh, June T celebration's coming up, June fifteenth, twelve to four. Um, the event lineup and details are available on the website and Facebook events, including steel drums, gospel, street dance, demonstrations, and more. Tickets for Sipping on Summer are now live, and a country music band has been added to that. It was good also to see everybody out at the, um, mural unveiling on Friday with, uh, Mayor on the Roof helping with the unveiling and the bubbles. That was exciting. Uh, there's a lot of people there, and, uh, W N A R and W P A L were both there to, um, interview and record the event. And as always, we have volunteer opportunities at our upcoming June events, including Juneteenth and the parade. Uh, additionally, there are always volunteer shifts available at the Farmers Market for people seeking service hours, as well as garden maintenance and watering shifts. Uh, for more details or to sign up for a shift, please visit the website's dedicated pages for each event.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Worked thorough as usual. It's my turn. It's my turn. It's my turn. Um, so I will begin with a little bit of history before I, uh, read a proclamation. At least five hundred and ten anti-LGBTQ bills were introduced in state legislatures across the United States last year. That's a new record, according to the ACLU, and that's nearly three times the number of such bills introduced in twenty twenty-two, which was in itself a record. Uh, June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine marks the beginning of Stonewall uprising. A series of events in New York City between police and LGBTQ-plus protesters that stretched over six days. It was not the first time police raided a gay bar, and it was not the first time LGBTQ-plus people fought back, but the events that would unfold over the next six days would fundamentally change the nature of LGBTQ-plus activism in the United States. I invite you all to learn more about the Stonewall uprising and, uh, LGBTQ-plus history in general. If you do, you'll learn that throughout the state of New York and in many other states, it was illegal to serve alcohol to a gay person until nineteen sixty-six. And in nineteen sixty-nine, homosexuality was still considered a criminal offense. This led many gay establishments to operate without a liquor license, providing an open door for raids and police brutality. The Stonewall Inn was owned by the mafia, and as long as they continued to make a profit, they cared very little about what happened to their clientele. The police raids on gay bars and spaces were not isolated to the East and West Coast, but were a phenomenon happening across the United States during this time. The first parade march was held on June twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-one, year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising. Fast forward to two Saturdays ago, Sykesville celebrated its fourth Pride downtown with a wonderful and welcoming afternoon filled with fun for family, craft projects, storytelling, and the always timely, life-affirming messages of living one's truth safely and in good company. But this year was a little different, and it was the, uh, first of the four that protestors, uh, decided to join us, some on their own while others were in a group, but all of them communicated a singular message filled with hateful rhetoric and derogatory language meant to minimize the truths of our visitors to downtown. They did succeed in scaring the children with the name-calling and threats of the world ending in fire. Um, so the protestors, so to the protestors and to anyone hoping that Pride will just go away from Sykesville, message received. But mission, uh, is an epic failure. We, protestors screaming through bullhorns and portable P A systems for four hours straight, even after the event concluded, will be one of the reasons why we celebrate Pride again next year in Sykesville, and also why I make this proclamation. Whereas the mayor of Sykesville recognizes and proclaims the month of June twenty twenty-four as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the town of Sykesville, and whereas the town of Sykesville honors the history of the L G B two, LGBTQ liberation movement and supports the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ people in society, and whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had an immeasurable impact on the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country, and whereas the town of Sykesville is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and the mayor calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Carroll County's LGBTQ community, and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen these alliances and to foster justice and advance equal rights. Now therefore, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of Sykesville hereby proclaims the month of June twenty twenty-four as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of Sykesville to be affixed this, the tenth day of June in the year twenty twenty-four. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sumoed.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I doubt it. We are adjourned at seven fifty-nine. Thank you.